Yeah, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting for November 7th, 2024. Stan, you can join me in signing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks to those who are joining virtually. We appreciate it very much. In terms of the agenda, we will be on item number three, which is additions and changes to the agenda, Mr. Tierney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen, if you would so approve, I'd like to make an addition for the obsolete vehicle auction that we have in front of you. We've used gov deals, surplus vehicles that have been replaced, get them out of the yard. And we've found that they have a broader audience and get us more money. So we listed the people that had the highest bid and the amount of money for the vehicles and both the public director and said that this is the best interest of the town. So if we expedite that because it was an auction, these people's texts are weighted after we did this, we could approve this tonight. That would be great. At least pick it up under consideration.
Where would that go? New business?
I would add, thank you Danny, add it under nine C, new business.
Okay, anyone object to that on the board? We will add that to nine C, the obsolete vehicle auction. And the associated motion, thank you. Anything else with your theory?
No.
For additions.
That would be it.
Okay. That moves us to section four, which is public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen or request that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. The Board respects the right of the public to provide comment. This is not a time, this time, excuse me, is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue, simply make arrangements, do so through Town Manager's office, to me directly. And obviously you can also feel free to contact anyone else on the board. Persons that are with us virtually wishing to comment, simply type comment and your name in the chat box and Donna will recognize you at the appropriate time. And as a reminder, there is a section here in four, if you're joining us for the first time, there are also section 12, which is right before the adjournment of our meeting, there's an opportunity for public comment as well. Donna, is there anybody virtually?
Nothing right now.
Okay, we have no one in person. So that moves us to section five, which is good to know and special recognition. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item six, first off, is an appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry, set five, good to know, special recognition.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. So that, please continue. Six.
Item six, appointments and resignations, Amplified Catchment Area Council 15 resignation. We added a little bit of an explanation of what that is. And there's also a motion. I can read that if you'd like. Sure. That's a letter from Maureen Schaefer resigning her position at Hebrew's representative to Amplify Catchment Area Council 15. Amplified Services, the North Central Region comprised of 37 towns in the North Central Region of Connecticut. Clusters of towns in the area are combined into six catchment areas that receive behavioral health services as a unit. CAC 15 has Andover, Bolton, Ellington, Hebert, Manchester, South Windsor Town and Council. Membership is comprised of town residents who are living with behavioral health challenges, family members concerning citizens, as well behavioral health providers. This group reviews and evaluates current behavioral health services and identifies gaps based on towns' needs and recommends changes that will serve the region. The life experience, knowledge of the ins and outs of your community, combined with the quality research and data can bring needed services to strengthen the region. And then there is the motion.
Okay. What, I have a volunteer, Keith, want to read the motion and we'll then open up for discussion.
I'll move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Maureen Schaefer from the Amplified Catchment Area Council 15 and thank her for her service.
Oh, she's read any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Please note if you wish to abstain. This was.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Item six B, Historic Properties Commission Appointment. The task is correspondence from June Danner. Her requesting employment as a regular member of the Historic Properties Commission. She currently serves as an alternate on Historic Properties Commission. Regular member vaca C term is due to expire December of 2024, accompanied by a proposed motion.
Okay, we'll read the motion. I think I asked you to read the longest one of history last night, Tiffany, so maybe let's read this one.
Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen appoint June Danner as a regular member of the Historic Properties Commission to a term that runs until December 2028.
Thank you, Tiffany. And motions were read. Any discussion?
I've, you know, known June. She's come to, you know, she's virtually always there, very active in the commission. And I didn't realize that she was altered, you know, but she was there full fledged. So definitely support this.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Please note if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Bennett, aye.
Keith, Tiffany.
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Ready? Item seven?
Yes, no, six. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, and that's, and then she'll be out until 2028?
Twenty eight, yeah.
Okay.
We had 24, two 2024 reappointments. The items are in here, but there I don't, it's, there's not a motion, right, on the six C?
That'll be next one for thing. Next meeting.
I just see it on the agenda. I didn't know if we were.
It's, I think it's available for discussion now and we vote next meeting in case anybody wants to research any names.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry about the confusion.
So we've reached out to all of the members, all of the members whose terms are expiring. They are responding to us. And then at the next meeting, we would be voting policy as it comes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that clarification. Thank you very much. Mr. Tierney, if you could continue for your Town Manager's Report, which is seven on the agenda for those following at home.
Thank you, sir. As you'll see, beginning to this a little bit further down the agenda, we've been prioritizing everything for ARPA. ARPA, ARPA, ARPA. It's a full-time priority one. We're getting the bids out. We have more bids hopefully going out tomorrow, the last two bids. We've been working really diligently. Pretty sure we'll get that to be turned around in time for you guys to make a decision. We have just a little under two months for the deadline of December 31st. We've been, you know, we've gone through changing planning and zoning regulations to getting planning is going to approve projects and getting them designed and engineered as simple as or as difficult as the lights, Danny would know this, at the park. That's one project, getting the power into the park to support the lights is another. So it was a huge engineering and design. We've stressed and we're confident that we'll have numbers back. And we have, we'll get into that a little bit more underneath the art box. And we've got the short list of projects in case there's money's coming back or money's left over or projects come in too high and we can't do them. We'll give you a list. You guys will choose what you like to fund or see. We don't get involved in that. But it's dominating not just my office, a lot of the department heads, but we're trying to get it. I mean, to make sure we're heard loud and clear. We don't want to give any money back. Eliot Hill Placcape has started.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seriously.
So that was another long one to figure out, you know, planning is on where, when, where it fit, where to put it, you know, at 88 liens. So it's underway. Happy to announce. Hamilton Drive Bridge is in.
Very nice.
It's completed up to the point where we have to do some plantings and some shrubbery, but the fences up. It's usable. It's open. Lights are in. Looks good.
Nice.
No, they're going to be able to do the plantings this fall?
I'm not sure, Dan, with the drought, the way it is, we're trying to keep the grass and everything alive to the trees that we put in already. I, so we're going to monitor this. It's one of the worst droughts we've ever seen. We hate to waste the money.
Oh, I agree. That's why I was like questioning whether or not this was really a wise thing at this time.
I'm very happy to announce that. That was another wall.
Wall done.
Well, we're on the, the bridge train, Grayville Bridge is done and open, finished. That went very well, came out very nice. Residents are happy. We've gotten the kudos from them, which is good, good news. Uh, the early voting went very well. We had a good turnout, a lot of people. So that was a hit more than I thought. I thought, I didn't really think it was going to.
Get over 200 people every day.
Per day.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, the building would actually. Yeah, we were compromised a little bit, but we made it work and got it done. The department heads along with ARPA are working on their CIP, which is due end of next week. So we're going to be trying to work and get that, start that, putting that together that time of year again already.
Uh, question me on the yearly voting. You were able to do it at this facility, but do you think in future years as it picks up possibly popularity, are we going to have to rethink being able to do it in this building or?
We might have to. One of the, well, we had a couple wrinkles in the road. It's no secret. I mean, our, our wifi was compromised. And that's why we building committee couldn't have a, you know, every meeting, we couldn't figure out why we tested the equipment prior to that, the meeting that night. They couldn't get it to work because we had IT the next day, but we had all the computers down here hooked up to the wifi and it was just too far away and not strong enough for too many things for it at once. So, you know, when we just had some trouble trying to get this up just before everybody got here, thanks to Donna and Keith. So yeah, we might have to take a look at some of this stuff as we move forward. I mean, it, you know, it was open for the weekend, you know, and a lot of people weren't here and stuff, not that that was a problem, but just, we just got to make sure we really now that we know what we're dealing with, we didn't know what to expect now that we have at least 200 people a day. I don't think we had too, too many lines out the door, but I know.
No, there were times where there was a line out the hall.
I went to other towns with the lines running out the door.
Yeah, it was never, I don't think it was ever out the door. Parking lots were busy.
Yeah.
They.
Yeah.
But they, they did a good job. The first couple of days, they were, they were ringing out.
Who are people? I mean, that's a lot of vehicles and everything else. This parking lot was never designed for that type of influx. So, and thank you.
No, good question. And then we're working on the projects with the DPW building. We're looking at the trash and numbers and things like that and getting information that may whatever source and trying to get that squared away. So that continues to go on. And an update on the Route 66 light project. DOT has agreed to a stub pole. So bear with me. In the center of town, if you're a planner or Town Manager, you're trying to get stuff taken out of, you know, you want underground, that's, that's the future. Instead of erecting now, instead of doing the underground that was proposed, they're proposing a stub pole. Which should be another telephone pole with power going to the lights. They won't allow the lights or the power to come across the same strand that actually holds the lights in place. They, that's recently eliminated. It used to be permitted, it's not anymore. So we're moving forward with the stub pole. They've approved that. They've reached out to Eversource, we're going to have to set the pole. Eversource still maintains that they want it metered. So my push is through the attorneys and politicians is let's get the stub pole in, let's get the power to the lights, let's get it energized. And that's an argument between Eversource and DOT, but in the interim, just set a rate that they've been using to run these light systems. And when that's figured out, you know, we'll do whatever we're supposed to do. But as I, I don't think there's, from what I've been told, and Danny, you can help me with this. So meter sockets are a 10, 12 month lead time.
Depending on the type of meter socket that they're requiring.
They specify just one. You can't deviate. There's 24 months to get the ones for the pump stations.
Correct.
So then they're, they're specing the same length. And that's the same reason the crosswalks down on 85 aren't energized because it's the same fight they want it metered and they're waiting for the meter socket.
Interesting. Okay.
So we've had calls and it's like I got called back into Kathiost and now we've got a number from DOT and a ticket into Eversource. I'm going to put the pushback on the check, get those up and powered up. If we were to go with the easement, they're looking eight to nine months. Get that legality squared away. And I just said, this is ridiculous. So we're trying to get this.
It's a good thing. They're our friends.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So with that, that's, that's what I have for the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you very much. Moves us to eight, which is old business. Mr. Tierney, I'll ask you to continue, please.
Eight A.
Hey, ARPA, what's that?
Okay, Donna passed out. A little no, and then we have some dates that we can let you know what we're planning on doing. And we, we do have some projects that, you know, for the overall, the start of this conversation, there's a lot of projects that are completed. And within budget, you know, the cert truck is almost done and the active shooter stuff is the training kits and the stop to bleed stuff has been ordered. So there's a lot of the stuff that we're willing to cancel out. There's just three items, which I'd stated earlier in the Town Manager Report. One would be the lighting in the ball field. Uh, the other one's the skate park, which that bit's going to be going out.
That one out. That's been issued.
Okay, like right from yesterday or?
Yesterday.
Okay. So we're, and we sent those to the companies, the three companies that are going to bid on it. That's not rocket science. It's not like a total redesign. This is what we want, give us a price. And then the other one's the ball field at Burnhill Park. And that, that's due.
Yeah, it's due the 15th and we should be able to award it at your next meeting.
So we're getting there. It's, it's a little bit longer than I, I was hoping, but we're really, it's some crunching and some jumping up and down and we're getting them going. So what we did is.
We're having the contract for the fencing.
The dog park and, and, you know, benches or whatever we need. That's, that's been contracted to, you know, get that money locked in. Last my train of thought, I was going to say. Yeah, I was going to say something just before that. Okay, I'll get to it. Oh, we're going to have the numbers. She's in the middle of an audit and we want to give you accurate numbers. So we're close, but we're not, we don't have the cigar yet. But we'll, we'll have them for the next Board of Selectmen. You get this much left and this, this much left and that. It's probably some money is going to be coming back from the bridge, but we want to make sure, we tell you it's actual. Um, and Donna can speak to the interest. There's $110,000 of interest that does not have to be spent. So right out of the gate, if you guys choose not to spend that on an ARPA project and we have money left over, there's $110,000 that you don't have to spend by December 31st.
We can use the interest earnings for anything, any purpose. It doesn't have to be designated for ARPA.
So we wouldn't be subject to any timeline deadlines? We could have that in reserve, I mean, as an example, or do they have to be allotted for by the end of next year?
So wouldn't, wouldn't the Board of Finance then transfer that back into the general fund for the end of this year?
We don't know the answer to that. We're just, we just wanted.
We're excited, you know, 100% of that you don't have to spend.
There's no deadline.
The interest earnings are not, they don't have to be.
Whatever happens with that, we would find out and make sure you get to the program thing, but it gives you a little bit of a loophole. Say, and I don't want to use any one product, say project Z is scheduled for $150,000 and all of a sudden, for some reason, those bits come in at 500,000 and we're not going to do that project. So now you've got $110,000 of the interest. So if you, you're not stuck, we are going to have to lose some money or put it towards another project. You're just a little bit of a issue.
So we, so we already calculated that one 10 into expenses, but that one 10 can be, I got you.
Yes.
So that one 10 is calculated into the, the fund. So when we're looking at this is how much
Yep.
we have to spend and we're worried about.
So we have that as a final buffer.
There's a little bit of a.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Yeah, that is good.
So then the other buffer would be, unless you have a question, Dan.
Well, again, and along that same line, you know, you've received estimates for different projects, different amounts. Okay. If those projects come in under the estimated amount, what happens to that money?
So what, what we'll do is we, we have, we're going to go down this list here. We've got quotes like for electrical, for Peter's House and a couple of quotes for the, the actual.
The plastering and all that.
Correct. Some quotes for the Old Town Hall for more work there. So we'll go down, these are stuff that have recent updated hopes that we could just sign as a contract to meet that deadline in case we get in trouble or in case there's money left over, giving areas to go. And I don't know if we missed anything. I don't think, but let me read down the list. So the first one, and this isn't any specific order, this is just a list. So the first one is Historic Society Old Town Hall Restoration. And we have that, those bids in. Peter's House Restoration, the 57, the library has those 3D printers. The senior center submitted some furniture and appliances. Company one fire station submitted some HVAC equipment. Hebrew Elementary School has a placcape that is in need of repair. So that would be a good area. And we have quotes for that, that could fit that venue. Uh, Hebrew Interfaith Human Services Donation, that's the, that's the holy grail. If we get stuck with something, they're going to be really appreciative, whatever we can do. So. And then of it, and worst case scenario, and like I said, I'm not suggesting any of this, but because we awarded the pickleball courts, it's just that, you know, we know what they cost. You could just do a change order and add on more courts if we want, because we were posing at some point having more of them.
Right now we're up to what's, is it six?
Three.
Three. Three.
Yeah. Six would have been the total.
Okay, we were setting it up so there could be future expansion.
Okay.
Outline of the.
So there's, there's enough land there for six, but we, we started off the budget for three.
Okay. So just in summary again, for those that may be catching up that isn't on the board of the town. So we have a good handle on the projects. We have the contingency set and a path. And in case we have extra money, we have sort of a list that we can look to that's ready. And which is great. So we don't have to make decisions on that tonight. If of the, of what's left, is there, tell me more about the lights, because that seems to be the lighting, the park light, the baseball park light. And that could be well over what we.
Well, we won't know until we get the bids.
Is that sort of the sense that that could be an exposure?
We got a price for doing the lights itself. We didn't have a price for getting the power into or design and then getting the power into the park. Which electrician, a much later date, we told us he thought our budget was sufficient. That could be another $200,000, the worst case scenario. So, I mean, Dan, you would know more about that than I. But what that would be doing, just in all honesty, it wouldn't be just that much money for one ballpark that would set the power in there to do whatever we need to do for the future of that park. You're getting the, getting the infrastructure in there. You need it for the one field, but once it's in, you could light the whole park down eventually without having to have incur that one time expense. And that's unfortunately, that's the kind of stuff that happens if you're going to build a complex. You know, the utilities in the road is going to benefit many, hopefully many different venues, but worst project, you know, bears that cost.
So we'll have that, we'll have that update for the next meeting. And then it seems like we're well positioned to make some decisions.
We won't have the, the bids for the lighting
Oh.
and the skate park until the 27th.
Thanksgiving.
The bids are due on the 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we'll be bringing those to your December.
The next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so. All right. So we'll be a little tight.
Yeah, it's a tight thing one.
So I guess as we go, if you're starting to sense something's going off the track somewhere in any of these things, but obviously.
We'll know about the ball field. And then we, the, the one at Burnhill. And we should have votes in for the skate park. Because those are already been set out. We sent them to the three individuals that are pretty much actually four, three and one local. So
Okay.
we should, and they know we're under the, we don't want to lose the money. So the one that's really going to be hanging out there and stuff.
The skate parks due the 27th.
Right, but I think Craig thinks he's going to know some, some possible, not, not in him, but some numbers prior to that. I don't know.
Okay, so it sounds like even though the timeline's tight, we should be able to.
And we'll have a better handle on the balance.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's, it's a whole bunch of other work, but the opportunity and the benefit for the town is significant. So thank you. And obviously your team for shouldering the burden of this as we move forward.
I just want to put it in in something, not that we have to, you know, make any decisions tonight. What I'd really love to see, because everyone's worked so hard on all these projects and they're really going to have a positive direct impact on the tech, on the residents.
Sure.
What can we do to sort of tune it according, so to speak? You know, kind of the dog parts open or the pickleball courts open, like, you know, do a Facebook Live from there and have a little ceremony or so that folks know, like, get the River East there to take pictures and such. Because even like in casual conversations with people and I let them know, you know, these ARPA funds and what impact they're going to have on the town. So it'd be great to be able to promote that.
Now, I wonder if we could do some, that's a good idea. And I wonder if we could do some, even some signage, especially on the bigger items that, because there's signage when we have state things that go on and, you know, place every, I wonder if we could do some signage that says this is another.
We could do both. Right now, we're so focused.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Trying to get the projects done and accounted for.
It's a good point. I mean, it's.
We could, we could set that up. That's more of a political thing. We could set something up so the selectmen can come and say, this is what we did with ARPA funds. That would be.
That's a good idea. I like that. A lot of, some communities, nothing wrong with it. Some communities took an easier way out and said, we're going to do everything toward one or two main things. And we decided as a group that we were going to get into giving every, many groups a chance to benefit from this in many areas. And, and subsequently done a lot more work, but something to be proud of. So I think that's a good suggestion. And we should continue to discuss how we can highlight that.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. Amy, Donna, you good with your update, eight A? Anybody else have anything?
I think, I think the only thing that I would add to that is just, you know, I, I know in past years, and it's not just our board, it's many boards. You know, kind of that, the later meetings in the month of December sometimes get canceled because of holiday things or whatever. And I'm not saying that we have to stick to our regular schedule, but if things get a little crazy, just keep it kind of in the back of our minds as selectmen that we should either have a special meeting or stick with the scheduled existing meeting to make sure we're wrapped up appropriately.
Yep. I would almost opt for planning on a special meeting just for this topic, just to make sure it's, as you're saying, it's just too important.
Can't, every meeting with you is special.
Well, that's.
That's what you're getting at.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, good, good, good point.
Well, then the other regular scheduled meeting would be the 19th, which is kind of like early enough that it's not really.
Yeah, I, I just want to throw it out there. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with keeping the regular on the 19th.
For sure.
Oh, definitely.
But I know that a lot of boards, if they had a meeting on the 19th, it would get canceled.
Good point. No, we're, we're already thinking we're going to need a special meeting.
I think this year we're going to need it, for sure.
Great. Well, thank you very much. That takes us to eight B, which I'll, I'll jump in on a Department of Public Works Action Committee update. Andy just discussed it. And so I'm not, I don't have a significant update, but we're collectively in the middle of a significant amount of, of research associated with costs and, and sort of the next steps in the project, working with Andy. And he mentioned that during his update. So unless anyone has any questions, I'll turn to Mr. Tierney to, to address eight C when you're ready.
All right, I just got to, this is business.
The town has to run 24 hours a day.
iHeartRadio.
Okay, so unless anybody has anything, I'm not, you've covered it and we're in the middle of a lot of work with communication and the associated
Right.
financial updates or research, asking preparing for RFQs, RPs, that sort of thing. So a lot of work. And, but no, no updates as compared to last meeting. So if anyone has anything, I would move to eight C, which is the Board of Assessment Appeals Altinance.
Yes. So once again, this has come up. This originated from Marty, uh, assessment. We, we've, we had an issue and we're possibly trying to avoid an issue in March where this is going to happen again. I think of the discussion we had the last meeting, there's a chance where if we don't get somebody that resigns or signs on a last signature, we could be facing another problem where the town can't conduct its business. So what we did is we reached out to the town attorney and we were able to pull off and get it done for September, but we're concerned that we might face a similar issue in March prior to any of the work in the charter that would be done. And also what's coming up is, that's when a lot of the real estate crews come in and maybe if we didn't do this specifically where it could be challenged. I mean, I know, I know Keith, I think you think, and I, I don't, I'm not taking any side of anybody's opinion that that statute reads that we can do what that could be challenged by whether it be a. whether it be a golf course attorney or an appraiser for somebody that wants to come in. So I just want to make sure what the town has to do are we are capable of doing. I don't see any downside to putting an ordinance in. That's just me. So I'm asking on behalf of the town manager. And to support my department head who asked as the assessor. So the reason I'm requesting an ordinance we put into place is because there has been an increase in difficulty to ensure there's a quorum for the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is BAA. To conduct the business of the town. Of this three members of the BAA, there must be two available to constitute a quorum. They're supposed to meet in person. And I said it again, supposed to meet in person. Life events have interfered with two or three being able to meet for both the March and September meetings. As it appears that the elected members have found life events which have prevented the board from fulfilling their obligations to the constituents. In March and September, if alternates were in place, less stress time and paperwork is required to accommodate a postponed meeting. Also with revaluation coming up for two thousand and twenty, it's grand list, there's a great lack of additional member who will be needed to manage what may be large volumes of appeals. This altogether typically for a revaluation appeals. Being proactive will allow for the upcoming year to be run smoothly and the citizens be able to be served. So that's the whole rationale behind this.
I know you had shared correspondence, but it was later in the day, so I don't know if everybody saw it. You just read, that's what you just read from?
Yes, that, this is what I shared.
If not, maybe not everybody saw that. I just, I think it came later in the day. So thank.
Didn't get that till late in the day.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
So it's up to the board how you want to proceed.
So what I'll do, I'll do, um, just for some consistency, I'll read the motion, and we'll open up for, for continue or discussion. So I moved at the Hebrew Board of Selectment, scheduled a public hearing for Thursday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four at six forty-five P M. At the Hebron Town Office Building, lower level meeting room. To receive public comment on the proposed ordinance regarding appointment of Board of Assessment Appeals Alternates. Oh, she's read it, open up for discussion.
I'd like to start. Back and forth on this, read the ordinance. I, I being a past member of the Board of Tax Review, which is what Assessment Appeals used to be called back in historic times. I can remember, especially we had a, a revow year, and we were even meeting on Sunday just to try to get through the, uh, throngs of people. Uh, it is statutorily, uh, required within a timeframe. Uh, as much as I am not a big fan of ordinances, until something better can come along, I think it behooves us to, to get this ordinance in place. It covers us for now. Um, then we can look at the charter or whatever, uh, one of my thoughts, but I don't believe we can. Uh, we have people now that are on that board that own property in town, but that don't live here in town. Uh, I'm not sure what the legalities of that are. Um, I do know that years ago, we had an individual that, I want to say the individual is on the Board of Finance, lived out the lake area, moved out of the area. Uh, and they were notified that, you know, they had to tender their resignation because they're no longer a resident. This is something that we, we need to address, uh, but we need to look also, is there other uh, down the road ways to handle this as well. So I, I personally feel we need to move forward with this.
Okay, okay. Someone else? Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think everybody knows that I'm, I'm not a huge fan of, of the extra layer bureaucracy. Also in the, the time that we're going to waste going through the motions of getting that. Um, you know, I, I think that it's a legitimate interpretation of the statute. Um, I know that the town attorney, uh, responded back that there was no, uh, legal reference, because no one has challenged that. So he didn't have anything to, to base his opinion off of saying this is how a court has weighed in in the past. But that kind of even makes me feel a little better about it, because no one in, you know, recent history has seen it worth it to challenge, uh, this kind of, this kind of action. So. Um, you know, he, he does see it as a plausible interpretation. I see it as a plausible interpretation. Is it a hundred percent certain? No, but it's going to shave two months off of our response time. So, um, there's kind of that, there's the bulkiness of it. And I think by appointing alternates and letting those appointments sunset. And then going through charter and having them expand it to a five-member board, I feel like we can get this long-term solved a lot easier than passing ordinances, you know, um, revoking ordinances and going through all the other, the other things where, um, I, I really don't see this being legally challenged. It could be, you know, in, in a case that there's a large enough issue, but is somebody going to challenge it when their assessment appeal is for fifty dollars? And the legal fees are going to run fifty thousand? That's probably one of the reasons why it's never been through court yet. Um, I just feel like we could get this done a lot cheaper and quicker, um, with the authority that we currently have.
So I just look the argument back. What, what we're proposing to do today is fill that void between now and when charter is done, and you can appeal your ordinance. I don't see any, any heavy lifting on putting an ordinance in or repealing one other than one meeting for each. Um, and we paid the attorney for his opinion, and his opinion is he's a hundred percent positive. We put an ordinance in, that can't be challenged. He is not a hundred percent positive, and it won't be challenged if we do it. So I just want to make sure the board knows that's his opinion.
So are we completely unable to appoint alternates now? Is that what the proxy?
Yeah, without, we have, because they're elected officials. The way the statute reads, you have to have an ordinance to be able to do that. But Keith, he's saying we could go to a town meeting and do it, but that would that could take some time and be cumbersome and not meet the deadlines of the board's work. Am I correct in?
We, we wouldn't have to go to town meeting. We can appoint alternates. We can't appoint the, the part C, appointing an elected member. We can't do that. That would have to be town meeting, but alternates we can do.
And that's what.
Yep.
That's, he's not sure.
That's what the attorney's not sure.
Yeah.
So right now, we have two different interpretations of somebody saying we can't appoint alternates, and the town attorney saying we cannot.
What the town attorney is saying without putting words in his mouth, if you do this, you're, you're fine. He, he's not confident as a town attorney that that can't be challenged.
And Keith was saying that it has not been something like that would not have any chance, right? Right. And so, as people are thinking about, I, where I am on it is, um, I respect, you know, kind of respect both sides, but I don't, I don't feel like, I know Andy mentioned, I don't see the downside of following attorney's recommendation uh, to support what we have targeted specifically as a, as a known issue associated with the tax assessors need to conduct the business of the town. So there's clearly a concern. Um, and if later the, the charter does make a, the charter commission does make a decision to change that structure. And as I said, then we could look to remove the ordinance if we need to. Um, but we don't know that's actually going to happen. It's, it could get changed by charter. Doesn't necessarily mean it would be changed by charter. Um, so there's that issue. I, I don't, I don't see a significant downside to it based on what I've read. It seems like it would help. Um, but I understand both sides, but if, for me, I, I lean towards the recommendation of the attorney to address a specific issue addressed by the town, the tax assessor as, as a way to resolve that without any degree of potential uncertainty. So that's where I am on it, is. Any more common discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm uncomfortable with the lack of specificity, as everybody knows. Um, but sometimes sta, sometimes statutes like these are really, you know, left up to interpretation and I would lean more to what you just said, Mr. Chairman, because, you know, I don't want to be the first town to have a challenge. So. Um, while I would be comfortable with these interpretations, I think I, I would lean to just do this now because I am concerned that the assessor doesn't have what they need to do their job. That's all I would add.
And I think the last thing I would add is I do appreciate the time you've taken, Keith, to actually think this through.
Yeah.
And give us some good things to discuss and put some good dialogue on the record, um, in terms of how to really think about this. So I do, I appreciate that. Um, so I want to show that's out there. Uh, any other discussion specific to the issue and the board of motion? Okay. So motion's been read. Thank you for the dialogue, and thank you for bringing this back before the board. Mr. Tierney, I know we had to get a couple of, uh, whacks at the, uh, the attorney's opinion, so I appreciate the clarification, additional information. So we'll move to vote all those in favor of the motion. Please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Keith.
You've got it abstain.
Tiffany, aye.
Are you?
Lonnie, aye.
Your cast, aye, motion passes, uh, for aye and one abstain. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Tierney. And that moves us to eight D, which is any other old business. Is there any other old business, Andy, you wish to bring before the board?
I do not.
Okay, anything the board wishes to, that's an old business, okay. That then moves us to nine A under new, is new business, Mr. Tierney.
Nine A is approved the two thousand and twenty-five for a selective meeting schedule attached since a proposed two thousand and twenty-five meeting schedule for the board of selectmen. All vacations, holidays and special events have been considered, preparing on the proposed schedule. And then there's a proposed motion with the list of dates on the back.
Any discussion? So, um, Dan, you want to read the most?
Oh, sure. Move to the Hebrew Board of Selectmen adopted two thousand and twenty-five meeting schedule as presented.
I have a question.
Please.
Uh, we're meeting on Juneteenth.
It's being suggested you haven't approved it yet. That's what this is for. That's just, that's a, a date that falls there. So that's up to the board's discretion. We're all the town of Hebrew is open that day.
Yeah, there's a lot of other places that aren't, though, it's becoming federal holidays. So that date is a little concerning to me.
It's, we, so we just went with the first.
Yeah, no, no doubt. I don't know. That was the first date I looked.
Yeah, Andy actually talked to me about as well, and we had talked about, are we open or not, clearly.
Yeah.
You know, so we, we were consistent with what we've done relative to being open. Um, but that's why we're talking about it. So that's a good point. And if someone, uh, if you want to propose something different, just to schedule.
Just throwing it out there as something we might want to think about.
We, we figured all we need to talk about that. Like I said, the ordinary stairs.
Right, that would be consistent. So do you want to, I love a lot of different data.
I would leave it for now and, you know, see, see how it progresses. I mean, we can always uh, cancel the meeting or whatever, with the town being open, uh, can't see why we can't come in and conduct town business.
So we approved this, we approved the schedule, Danny, what's our, Manny, what, what time would we?
Wait a second, June twentieth is the Thursday. This is the wrong date, right?
Let me find out from my guru.
Oh, no, I'm looking at this here. I'm sorry.
That's, I think I might have a solution.
Okay.
So if you look at the calendar for June fifth and the nineteenth,
Mm-hmm.
You look at July, the next meeting is July third, with the fourth being the next day. So we can push the later June meeting back and get rid of the Ju, July third meeting. Does that make sense? And that would solve a problem?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we should do ten and twenty-four for July and, and push the nineteenth to the next. Yeah, I'm fine.
I would be comfortable with that. I just think from an optics perspective, it's not a great idea to meet on a federal holiday day like July third. Yeah.
Keith, don't you want? Ten dollars.
Am I?
No.
No, 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 no.
We get Friday.
Why you to be off?
I want to be off on the other day.
Yeah, so we're going to move the nineteenth to what?
And the third becomes the.
That's how. Well, we're going with, we're going with the second, because we, we have to choose for July. So we'll do the ten and twenty-four.
Oh, I see. Ten and twenty-four, yeah. And then June is just fifth and twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fun. Yeah, I think that, that works for me, that works for.
Sun comes up, I go to work.
Okay, so, um, just note that the, the motion then has a friendly amendment, which is, uh, Mr. Larson.
Uh, sure. So the friendly amendment would be, uh, June fifth and June twenty-sixth. And with July would be the tenth of the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Mr. Mr. Chair, before you vote, and the vote on the whole thing, uh, the other one we have bolded is in a you have the Hebrew Board of Vacation, and then Good Friday on the eighteenth. So you got April third and the seventeenth. I don't think the third's around, but the seventeenth is between the vacation and Good Friday is the eighteenth. So I don't know if you guys want to have any consideration around that before you vote.
I, I mean, for me, because it's not falling on an actual holiday, I, I don't mind meeting that Thursday. I appreciate that. Maybe some members of the community are away that week, but I, I'll be here. So I.
We just can't, exactly.
I don't know. I, I think it's different when it's an actual holiday versus just the day on four. I, so I would be fine. I mean, if if one of us can't be here, we're not going to be here. So.
I just want to make sure you're conservative.
Yeah.
Even as.
Okay, so motion's been read with the associated friendly amendment. Discuss it, I'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, or nay, if you wish, if you're opposed, or, or if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
You've got it, aye.
Tiffany.
Tiffany, aye. Lonnie, aye.
Thank you, Peter Castry. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
You guys want to add one thing, um, page twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-five holidays. We need to change Columbus State to a division, Tuesday, please.
No, is that on? Oh, on, oh, on there. Oh, okay. Well, I got you. So we need to update the Columbus Day. Okay, thank you.
Where do we need to change that?
That's just the wording on the.
The wording, going forward, it's not Columbus Day anymore, is that?
I think it's recognized by both, but I, I'm not, because of, why do we list it that way? Because that's what it's always been, so they get booked, or said, oh, it's on our.
Yeah.
Action.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we, can we put, do both? Is that a problem? Can we recognize it with both, both headers? And the reason satisfying is that it's in a contract.
Policies are not. Well, that's why I was looking at Keith, because in the state contract, it's listed that way, too.
Well, well, because it hasn't, I don't think it's changed.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
We're trying to get a pushback, but I think, I think another good compromise would be.
Okay, we don't want to confuse the content.
So we can update the contract.
That's fine.
So start right there.
Language is recognized, that's what it works to be.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a good, good, good observation. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that would move us to nine, uh, C, which is the, um.
So you know the draft agenda?
No, 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 the, uh, the vehicle.
I don't.
Yeah.
The obsolete vehicle auction.
Yeah, but you didn't do the agenda for.
Oh, the draft agenda for the twenty-first?
Yeah, you should do that one, then we can do this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So we have the agenda listed for B. I guess I thought about it, I didn't say it. Uh, if you have any, uh, questions, changes or whatnot, um, please just fill us, I've seen, I'd be here or at Randy's office. Um, if, um, there's anything you wish to address prior to the agenda, be formalized, finalized. So thank you for that. Um, okay, that does now move us to nine, um, C, uh, how many other new business we did add as a board, the obsolete vehicle auction list in there. I'll turn to Mr. Tierney, and, uh, and then we have a motion.
Yeah, so you have a handout that I put in front of you today. Sorry, it wasn't in the packet, but the auction wasn't done, done until after the packet. So therefore, hopefully the board can see it to support this, which is the obsolete vehicle auction. These are vehicles that have been replaced and taken out of service. We normally get rid of them for surplus. So we use GovDeals, which is a function house that services municipalities. Attached as a memo, the Public Works Director, Paul Forrest, recommending the sale of the auction recently conducted wrapping surplus vehicles through GovDeals. And there's a proposed motion, and I would think the motion would list the vehicles that are listed there to be approved.
Okay, so we'll read the motion, and I apologize, um, I haven't picked on you yet. If you can, be so kind as to read the motion and the associated list of vehicles, so then we'll.
Uh, move that the Hebrew Board of Selectment award the sale of obsolete slash surplus vehicles as follows. Would you like me to read each vehicle?
Yes, we'll, yeah.
Two thousand and nine G M C Sierra to Jason Swan for four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Two thousand and one Ford five fifty dump truck to Michael Hutchinson for five thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Two thousand and one Ford five fifty dump truck to Michael Hutchinson for five thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Twenty thirteen Ford one fifty to Agence night of Ed for two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Nineteen ninety-four International Trailer to Jason Swan for nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Two thousand and five Ford Crown Vic to Jason Smith for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Two thousand and three Ford two fifty to Chris Napolitano for two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Nineteen ninety-five GMC truck to Timothy Farmilal for one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
It's very much motion's been read. I'll open it up for any discussion, question, or Andy.
Is it specifically required that we authorize the sale of capital items?
Yeah, we've always had the board, because it's town property. While we dispense with it, I've always, always gotten approval of the board selection.
Have we raised the limit on that? I mean, you obviously don't come to us for everything that gets surplus. I mean, you guys do throw stuff away without telling us. I mean, can we raise the limit to like fifty thousand that you can surplus capital items up to fifty thousand?
Yeah, I'm lucky we searched that, but I would think for the purposes of tonight, if you could.
Yes, for the, right, good. Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying. Because, because I, I know from, and it, and it may be a while before we surplus vehicles again, but having run government surplus before, like, telling someone, yeah, you won the bid and they want it right then.
They do.
They do. Um, and say, well, you know what? You got to wait three weeks until my next board meeting so that I can release it. I, I, I mean, for, for depreciated capital items up to fifty thousand or even seventy-five thousand. I don't necessarily know that that requires.
Yeah, so we're following past practice.
No, no, I, yeah.
Right. I'll say that so it doesn't.
Yeah.
Come, come. It's just as the town manager, I feel more comfortable getting the blessing.
No, I, I, I agree for now. I just want to be able to authorize that so you guys can be more flexible and responsive going forward.
Nobody from town is on this list. So I just keep all the funny business out of it.
Right.
Yeah, okay. That's a really good suggestion. So maybe get the attorney to say, there's a common or you can get some,
Yeah.
common town practices associated with CCM or whatever. Okay.
Kind of curious question. So when you say in Booker and, and fund received, where does this money go?
It's back to the town and it goes to Port of Fine, probably back in. I'm ready to go back to the show.
Okay, thank you. Good suggestion and good, good discussion. Thank you. Motion's been read. All those in favor, please signify by saying, signify, excuse me, by saying aye, those opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
You've got it, aye.
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia Peter Castry, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that will move us to, uh, ten on our agenda, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section, they request the chair to remove it. Later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. The two items, uh, the consent agenda today are the approval of the minutes and that, uh, dot A, dot one, October twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting and tax refunds. Anybody wish to make a change or pull anything out or? Okay. All right. So, um, all those in favor, please signify by, by saying aye, those opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that. Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
You've got it, aye.
Tiffany Teale.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia Peter Castry, motion passes unanimously. Move to nine, uh, number eleven, which is liaison reports to H M E Services. There's, nothing for me to report. Who's a St. Hebron Board of Ed, Tiffany?
Um, the Hebron Board of Ed hasn't met, um, since the last time we met. Um, but if note, the Hebron Volunteer Firefighters met with their kindergarten students on October twenty-fifth, and showed them the trucks and shared some fire safety tips.
Thank you very much, Port of Finance, Dan. You said no? No, okay, thank you. Land acquisition, Keith?
Uh, the next land acquisition meeting will be the first week in December. I, I want to say it's the fourth, but I don't have my calendar in front of me. Um, but it's the first week in December. And this one will not be canceled because they have to have it for the end of the year. Okay, so.
Thank you, Rand Board of Ed.
Uh, they are entering contract negotiations for the teachers. Um, and they just concluded the top, contract negotiation for the professionals and for the nursing staff. So onward and upwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tierney. Anything for you from?
No, I pretty much covered.
Okay, thank you very much. Moves us to section twelve or item twelve, excuse me, which is a public comment. Donna, is there any public comment? Okay, again, for those virtually, there's no one here personally. So, uh, we'll move to.
Uh, move to adjourn the Hebron Board of Selectments meeting at seven fifty-five P M.
Thank you very much. And as always, thank you very much to Tom for being prepared and for bringing forward a good agenda. Thank you so much.